Okay, I see about the clock on the wall is three o'clock. A call to order the board of directors. Study session, a meeting for Thursday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Could have a roll call, please.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Duncan.
Here.
Vice President Wright.
Here.
President Martin.
Here.
Thank you. We have form.
And moving on to item five, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board. On matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action. On any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody wishing to make public comments today?
President Martin, we do not have anyone for a public comment at this time.
Okay. Moving on to item six, human resources report. Pardon?
That well, that will be on Monday.
Okay, Monday.
Usually wait and do that on Monday.
All right. Moving on to item seven, resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Which is an amending resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. Revisions to Mission Springs Water District Personnel Rules and Regulations. Is recommended to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Providing for the revisions to Mission Springs Water District Personnel Rules and Regulations. Arden?
Okay, I'm gonna let Oriana cover this. This is something that we do at least once a year, it seems like lately because we have. Different laws that change and that basically is reflected in in the necessity to change our personnel rules. And so we're gonna do that and I'll let Oriana.
Oriana, go ahead.
Move forward with that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. As it is our regular practice and in order to ensure that the district is in full compliance with laws implemented by the state and federal agencies. The district council and I regularly review and revise the personnel rules and regulations. The last employee update, employee handbook update was in December of twenty twenty-one. And the revisions to the personal rules and regulations we bring before you today. Include updates to existing policies to comply with the law or to clarify policy language. In addition, we are including an education and certification incentive pay. Rule twenty-nine, it's a new rule. And this was added to encourage and reward continuous learning for certifications and education. Which will better prepare the districts workforce to assist and serve the customers' needs. Exhibit A in your packet outlines the updates to the personal rules and regulations. However, there are some updates being made to what is in your current packet. And I would like to draw your attention to the last page of exhibit A. So I can point those out to you. Rule thirty-five, we are updating the first sentence to read. It is the intent of the district to maintain a workplace that is free of drugs and alcohol consumption during work hours. Rule thirty-nine, we're updating, we are striking. AA, we're only going to incentivize bachelor's degree. Those are the only two updates which will be reflected. On Monday's packet. Also, the staff report will be updated to reflect a fiscal impact of thirty thousand dollars. For the certification pay, which is already included in the current fiscal year budget. So we are not requesting any additional funds. That's all I have and I'm open for questions.
Okay, any questions from the board concerning the the item at hand?
I have one.
Yes, Randy, go ahead.
And this is really just a technicality. On rule thirty-five. Intended district maintained a workplace, blah, 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 that is free of the inappropriate use of drugs. Does this? So that people can take their antihistamines or their antibiotics for their prescription drugs without? Is that what that is?
Yes, that is the intent. We are updating that language to rid the consumption. Of drugs and alcohol, but yes, that is absolutely the intent. We don't want to penalize people that for. Medical reasons are required to take medicine.
Okay, on that, on that point, it was a good question. A lot of prescription drugs do have impairment. With they say on that prescription, for example, you can't operate a motor vehicle or something like that. And I'm wondering. Should they be be asked to disclose such restrictions? How do you handle? How do you handle that?
Well, typically when we know that is the case, yes, staff is required to disclose and then we seek to make an accommodation that will. Allow the employee to work around that. But yes, we certainly don't want the staff driving while asleep.
But I mean, how would we know that unless they came forward and divulged that information?
They will have to come forward and divulge that information. We have no access to their medical records. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nancy? Ivan? Director Grasha?
I have no questions on this, but before you move on to the next item, I have a point of order and a quest for clarification. From legal counsel on the standing of one former director that seems to be still. Sitting on the board in violation of the district attorney's determination that he vacated his seat.
Okay, our counsel isn't here today. Would it be appropriate for you to? To wait until Monday when the counsel is present to ask that question?
It's not a question. That's a clarification from counsel, I'm sure.
Well, that's okay, clarification.
Well, you know, we have a letter here stating that the office has been vacated. It's declared by the district attorney. Apparently, there's been multiple acts of perjury that are associated with that haven't been charged. And I'm wondering if his continually sitting on the board will activate those charges. And smear the reputation of this district. And I think it's time before we continue on with this meeting. To address that as a board and not pretend that this is not an elephant sitting in the room. I find it offensive that this is happening right now.
Okay, thank you for your for your input, Director, excuse me, General Manager, William, you having a come? Okay, yeah, we're not voting on any issue today, so it's kind of a moot point, but we can address that issue on Monday if you if you like.
If you don't mind, I'd like to read into the record and I'll provide this document that was addressed to the Board of Directors. Yeah, it was addressed to the Board of Directors and I never received it from the district, which was. Interesting. I had to receive it from a reporter during a questioning about your actions at the previous board meeting. So if you don't mind, so to just to clarify any misunderstandings that was created by this board in their action last month. Let me just read this letter and I'll provide it like I said.
Well, we're not gonna take the time to read the entire letter.
I think it's imperative that the public and the staff understand what what is going on here. You tried to confuse the issue last month. We spent an entire month waiting for clarification that never came. And here we sit pretending that this is. Legit and it's not. It's been declared vacant.
Wait to your recognition.
So let me read. The Riverside County District Attorney's Office has received a request to investigate a substantial violation. By Director Randy Duncan. Of his residency requirements of the Mission Springs Water District Board Director pursuant to Water Code three zero five zero eight. The complaint alleges that Mr. Duncan no longer lives in the division he was elected to represent. Such a violation may jeopardize the finality of actions taken by the board since violation occurred, which is nearly two years ago. According to the Mission Springs Water District website, Mr. Duncan was most recently appointed to the board in October of twenty fourteen. After having served on the board for a few years prior. The website also mission mentions that Mr. Duncan has lived in Desert Hot Springs for more than twenty-five years. Our office recently learned that Mr. Duncan no longer resides within the Mission Springs Water District, having purchased a home outside of California. While Mr. Duncan used to live in Calif- in Desert Hot Springs within the district. We determined that he sold that residence upon purchasing a new home out of state. We also discovered that Mr. Duncan stays with a friend in Desert Hot Springs about four days a week. But that friend's residence is not within Mr. Duncan's water board district. Mission Springs Water Board of Directors must reside within their respective divisions. If the director moves out of their division, they are deemed to have vacated their position if they fail to establish residency. Proper residency within a hundred and eighty days. This is codified in Water Code three zero five zero eight. If a director's place of residence as defined in section two forty-four of the government code is moved outside the district boundaries or outside of the boundaries of the director's division. Were elected from a division or within a hundred and eighty days of move. Of the effective date of this section, the director fails to reestablish a residence. Within the district or within the director's division, it shall be presumed the permanent change of residence has occurred. And that vacancy exists on the Board of Directors. A place where one remains for labor or special or temporary purpose does not qualify as a place of residence. And a person may only have one residence. Therefore, neither Mr. Duncan's out of state residence nor his temporary stays at a friend's residence outside the district would constitute. Qualifying residences for the purpose of compliance with Water Code section three oh five eight. Without a qualifying residence within the district, Mr. Duncan vacated his position as director of the Mission Springs Water District. According to Government Code. One seven seven zero, Mr. Duncan's position became vacant when he ceased to be an inhabitant of the district for which he was appointed. And within which his duties of his position are required to be discharged. Based upon the facts as we understand them, our legal analysis hasn't concluded that Mr. Duncan's current position. As a Mission Springs Water District Board Member constitutes a clear violation of three zero five zero eight Water Code. The District Attorney of Riverside County is committed to the objective ensuring. That the Board of Directors of Public Agencies are qualified to hold their position of office and uphold the integrity of the board's actions. To that end, we respectfully request the board comply with the law. By officially vacating Mr. Duncan's position as of the day he moved outside of his district. Which was nearly two years ago, I'll add. We also request the board review prior actions that were taken during the violation period. And to ensure that you were in compliance with quorum majority requirements set forth in Water Code three oh five two five and. Three oh five two three. Failure to appropriately remedy this matter may result in further action taken by the District Attorney's Office. And I would add, I think that you need to really consider. Turning your nose up at the District Attorney's Office, considering that there was multiple felonies involved and the perjurious signatures to documents declaring that.
I'm going to cut you off now. You're editorializing. First of all, I want to make two points and then we're gonna move on. First of all, Director Grasha has not been convicted of any offense. These are merely avenues of investigation that the. I'm sorry. Yes, Director Director Duncan has not been convicted of any offense. And these are merely charges that they are that they looked at. And I'm not prepared to discuss that because he hasn't had his time in court. May I also remind you that like Director Duncan. You, Mr. Grasha. Are facing charges or investigation, I should say, with the Attorney General's Office for a very similar offense. So if we're going to have him withdraw from the meeting, then then you would follow suit. But until you have your day in court, until the investigation is completed. He's gonna sit here until until counsel advises otherwise. So with that, we're gonna move on to. Item eight. Resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District. Proclaiming a local emergency persists, reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order. And as Nora dash zero nine dash twenty-one and reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings. Of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District for the period July twenty-third. Twenty-two to August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two pursuant to the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. That's a pretty standard and self-explanatory. Does anybody have any comments they want to make on resolution listed on item eight? Anybody? I see none. Moving on to item nine, resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, Conflict of Interest Code update. It is recommended to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. Amending the Mission Springs Water District Conflict of Interest Code. Arden?
Okay. Excuse me, this is quite self-explanatory, nothing more to say other than we've changed through the class comp. Some positions and staffs assigned to those positions have changed and so we're basically recognizing that change.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Ivan? Director Grasha, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, great. Moving on to item ten. Various agreements related to the rehabilitation of the Horton Wastewater Treatment Facility. The North Building is recommended authorize the general manager to enter in. To an appropriate into the appropriate agreements to facilitate the rehabilitation of the Horton Wastewater Treatment Facility, the North Building. This rehabilitation includes construction and upgrades for two bathrooms, kitchen and office space for the water. And collections department, the agreements necessary to complete the rehabilitation are with Puro Clean for twenty-six thousand. I'm sorry, what? Anyway, Pearl Clean. For twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for roofing. High desert air for eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty. For air conditioning, Cove Electric for thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars sixty-two cents, electrical update. Upgrades and SW plumbing for eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars for additional plumbing. For plumbing. General Manager Wallen, do you have anything further?
No, other than the fact that, you know, I think I think part of this was was because of the the pandemic. And and, you know, getting most of this work done, which was initiated at the time. Brian will go through the details here on this.
Actually, we'll turn it over to Eric Weck, our engineering manager. He has a short presentation for you.
Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. This afternoon on your agenda, it's item number ten. It's the Horton Wastewater Treatment Facility North Building Rehabilitation and Remodeling Project. Currently, the space that this building is north of the laboratory building and that'll come in to the presentation later. So currently, the space at the North Building is used for storing chemicals and other ancillary items. And it's not really being maximized right now. So by doing this project, we went through it and we identified a few things that need to be done. And one of the goals is to repair and re-roof the facility. And we're gonna do that first. That's gonna be item number one. The next is that we're gonna renovate an existing shower and restroom area. And I've got some existing photos of these locations that I may be speaking about. And so my goal here is to give you a roadmap of where we're gonna go. And then when the project is done, I will come back to the board. And show you before and after photos. And show you the improvements that were made. So likewise, we're also gonna construct a new shower and a new restroom in a unused, underutilized space in the building. And then we're gonna get some electrical upgrades to accommodate these improvements. And replace the existing swamp cooler with a two-stage, one single two-stage air conditioning unit. So what are the benefits? Well, we're gonna provide dedicated and usable workspace for the wastewater staff. Currently wastewater staff and laboratory staff are sharing the same building. And so that makes it for cramped work quarters. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna get the wastewater staff over into the North Building. That'll be renovated and will provide enough workspace and elbow room for both wastewater staff and laboratory staff. And we're also in the North Building, provide a dedicated break and meeting area for the staff so that they conduct trainings and workshops. And then finally, we're gonna maximize an underutilized space by constructing a new restroom and shower facility. So these are the existing site photos of the North Building. The one on the left shows the current existing shower and restroom. All joking aside, if you use that shower right there as it is, you need to step outside just to change your mind. So we're gonna remove that shower facility and also take out that water heater that's there. And install a new shower unit that's bigger, that has more room. That water heater will be replaced by a tankless water heater. And in this in this room here, there's gonna be also some minor plumbing modifications. Now you'll see on the photo on the right with the existing roof damage. That's why we reached out to Puro Clean. That's one of the quotes that we received. For repairing this roof and what you see here is ceiling damage, but there's also some damage in the internal. Ceiling area that needs to be fixed. So that's what we're seeking to do. Finally. This is the existing kitchenette area that is in the North Building. We're going to repurpose that space to have a locker room. And the appliances that are there now, the ice machine and the refrigerator will be moved to the bigger room that's beyond that door there. And so they'll have they'll relocate the microwave, the refrigerator. And the ice machine there. And they'll be able to also have workspace in that area. And next is what I'm excited about. This is an unused room in the North Building. We're gonna completely transform this into a shower and restroom room. To allow more staff to use this and clean up before heading home. And that door will obviously be taken care of. But we're gonna so in that right picture, you'll see the after picture in a couple of months when I come back. And show the board that you'll see a new shower facility, restroom and lavatory. So that is basically it in a nutshell, other than staff has reached out to multiple vendors. To obey the procurement process here for the district. And the quotes that we received are the ones that we were able to get from available contractors that were willing to do the work. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, and Nancy, any questions?
No, no questions, but gee, that that looks really great. I'm kind of excited about that shower area too for you guys. It was really great.
Ivan, any questions? Director Grasha, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions regarding the bid process and this project. I'd like you to report to the board on how many. People were invited to bid, who those bidders were and how this what made it through the process. And why it seems to be split up in so many different directions that it makes it confusing for a director to follow it. Maybe you could address that.
Yes, sir. So initially, what we wanted to, what I was interested in doing is putting together a complete bid package and bidding it out. With summer coming up, I wanted to have these improvements done as soon as I could. So that the air conditioning unit and all these improvements can be done. At least. At least as soon as we can. I know we probably won't be able to make, we're not gonna make the summer timeframe. So we decided to split it up. And in doing so, we invite, I don't have the exact numbers, but we did. I can share with you an email that I received from our plant operator. Who coordinated getting a hold of all those different other vendors that were not interested. And. Staff met with them and the folks that were interested. We got the quotes and. Director Grasha, I will be more than happy as well as the board to provide that email as backup. The intent is to get this, these improvements completed. As expeditiously as possible. So that wastewater staff and can enjoy a space that's air conditioned. And that they can work in.
In addition to the. To the email you're gonna send out, could you go over? The number of people that were contacted to answer Director Grasha's questions. And divulge that information on Monday so that the public is is aware of the process.
Yes, Director. Martin.
The reason I asked the question is it's been a long time since I've been active in the construction business, but. With some experience along those lines, it seems to me that job splitting is against. California code and sometimes it gets confused with. You know, agencies like this tend to get away with whatever they want and not not pay much attention to what the law actually says. We've experienced that just now for the second time today. So I'd like you to take take a good hard look at whether or not you're splitting those jobs in violation of a public contract code. Thank you.
But we. Yes. I just, I mean, we understand that and that's what we're doing is to be sure that the board knows exactly what we're doing. And we are trying to get, you know, we'd follow that procurement policy very closely, but. These are broken down where they're not required through the process, but I wanted you to be still. Aware of the fact that we did not get a complete package, so we needed to break it down like this.
Okay. Okay, anything from the rest of the board else? Okay. Ivan, anything? Okay. Moving on to item eleven, First Amendment to Contract with Runal Clark Architects for the Design of the Critical Services Center Administration Building. Is recommended authorize the general manager to amend the professional services contract with Runal Clark Architects. For the design of the Critical Services Center Administration, the amendment would increase the contract amount seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. From. One million seventy-two thousand two hundred to a not to exceed amount of one million eight hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. And authorize the general manager to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager Wallen?
Yeah, I'll let Brian introduce the representatives from Runu Clark, which will give you a presentation. Informing you of the the changes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board, staff. Yes, this project has evolved significantly since the first fee and scope of this project was brought to you last July. The original contract was based on the design of a Critical Services Center Administrative Building. At either the potential property purchased located just off of Palm Drive or the current corporate yard. After much consideration and discussion by the board, the Critical Services Center, the administrative building. Is now to be constructed on property that is owned by Mission Springs Water District at Two Bunch Palms Trail. Currently, the district is considering a full built-out development, which includes not only the administrative building, but a new maintenance facility with three vehicle bays. Parking areas, solar canopies, walkways and a conservation garden. As such, Runel Clark Architects has requested this amendment for their design services for the fully built-out development. That is the action idle item before us today. Before I start with the discussion on the specific amendment. With the board's permission, I would like Runel Clark to give the presentation and update everybody and move up the item that's later in the agenda to now, so it sort of brings it all together.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. With that being said. I believe Mr. Clark is on the line to give a presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm actually gonna ask Alvin Flores, who's been intimately involved in the planning of this. So I don't want to steal this thunder for this project, but we're excited about where we're going with this and so Alvin, could you make the presentation and I'll comment if I feel like it's necessary?
And all right, I just want to make sure everyone can see my screen I'm sharing currently. And all right, I just want to make sure everyone can see my screen I'm sharing currently.
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you very much. So jumping into it, quick agenda overall, we're going to go through. The site plan quickly, but mostly the bulk of the presentation will be jumping into the interior portion of the building, presenting kind of some of the concepts. Our earlier presentations have outlined our overall design and I'm kind of working from the site. To maybe the exterior of the building and then now we're going to kind of dive into that interior design a little bit more to give everyone a better idea. So, but as I was mentioning, first we'll kind of go over the site plan. So not much has changed here from, I believe, the last presentation that Brian presented to the board. What we've continued to do is refine the design of the site. I think one of the major comments that we had previously was making sure that the staff parking was moved behind the fence. So there's some added security for that. The only thing outside of that is defining the location of the trash enclosures. Some EV charging stations for future infrastructure. And again, just kind of refining the general layout to make things work a little bit tighter. I know in terms of. Solar and whatnot, we're definitely working with the district on that to find the most appropriate way to bring solar to the campus. Whether that's through a PPA, working in Southern California Edison or other methods in order to help in terms of funding. And on our side, the big thing that will make sure we coordinate is the infrastructure, making sure that whatever. Infrastructure is necessary, power conduits and whatnot can be provided to those solar campaigns, whether they happen. Early in the project or if it can happen further down the road, depending on how funding occurs. The other portion that we're working with the district is the demonstration gardens. I believe Brian just mentioned to me earlier that he was able to allocate some additional grant funding for that. So I think that's another piece that we're trying to find additional funds to help make sure that that vision, you know, occurs for the site. There, jumping into the interior concepts like you mentioned earlier. This is a sheet that we presented earlier that kind of gives you an idea of the overall palette for the project, the color palette. Mentioned some of the materials and also some of the fixtures and other pertinences that we're looking at. To add into the building. And from here, this is kind of our vision of how those are going to be laid out within the building. So that color palette that we had presented previously, this is implemented into the building. The general idea here is that each area, so in this case is the executive area. And this one would be the customer service. Administrative area have very distinctive, distinctive color palette. So as you are traversing through the space, when you're in the space and you move to a different space, you do feel that difference and you have a sense of place as to where you are. So moving further into the building, this is the engineering area. And then further to the side will be the operations area. So you can kind of see that distinctive color palette being distributed throughout the site or throughout the building. And again, that gives you a sense of place as you're working through the building. And basically also in terms of visitors and whatnot, makes it easier for them to be able to see, you know, which department they're in. As they're going through and again, kind of giving everybody a sense of place. We do have some geometric patterns that are also being taken in from the cues from the exterior design. So we do have some geometric patterns that are reflected in the overhang on the exterior of the building. And those types of concepts are also being brought into the building, in this case the floor plan. And you'll see a couple more other areas that we also have that involvement in. Here. So aside from the color palette on the floor, basically as you move up the walls, there's other elements that we're looking at to. Add some, another sense of place or actually even bringing in aspects of the district in terms of the history. Maybe some archival photos and having that spread throughout the, the building. So as you enter into the lobby, what we're looking at is having graphics on the wall. That are representative of maybe the topographic area of the Mission Springs Water District. Also probably highlighting some of the aspects of water on the walls again, kind of giving an opportunity as people enter the building. To kind of get a nice introduction as to, you know, who the district is, what they serve. And as we get further in, you'll see some more specifics to that too. And as I mentioned earlier too, about the geo, geometric patterns, there are also other materials that we have scattered throughout the site. That kind of again, kind of bring that concept from the outside into the building to make some uniform concepts and. Kind of show that strong design. Other elements on the wall, you know, we can also do graphics and with verbiage to again, help with wayfinding. Or help understand where you are, maybe the purpose of this space. And also outside of that, maybe using some other accent colors again to bring a little bit more. Focus to certain areas within the, the building. Also take this, so as I mentioned earlier, for a little bit on this guy. So as you enter the lobby, again, this is one concept that we're looking at is having a wall graphic. In this case, it has contours that kind of show the landmassing and some of the, we can also, like I mentioned earlier, bring in some of. The water features that are related to the district. And in this case, I know that this is one of the phrases that is used in, you know, district literature and on their website. So again, finding opportunities to scatter to that throughout the building again to, you know, illustrate to the community. And also the site staff kind of what important values that the district wants to show. And again, this is just a sample of what could be used. We can always change it, add it or revise it to any panel set the district feels. The other aspect of the lobby is the reception desk. So as of now, this is our first pass at trying to provide something that first off provides. Like a central place for everyone to go to. Everyone knows that, you know, this is the reception area. But also providing a little bit of visual interest, again, that geometric pattern and that color palette, bringing that into the desk. And also, you know, providing some level of security, but not making it feel completely enclosed or completely separated. So that way there, there can be that interaction, but there is a level of security that we're trying to provide, but not make it feel. Like it's too overbearing. Other elevation that we're exploring is the boardroom. So right here, what you see is the board dais and then behind this, we're looking at a stone wall with metal panels. And then trying to bring the district graphic onto that. And then use various materials here to help elevate the space and provide a nice background to, you know, focal point for. Board meetings and or other meetings that the district would have in the space. When it comes to the ceiling, again, bringing in a lot of those materials, some of the geometric patterns. Using various fixtures to generate interest within the spaces and help elevate the spaces. Also using the ceiling to help define the different areas. So again, as you're walking down this hallway. You know that you are passing from one department and kind of making your way to a different department. Or in this case, kind of drawing you into this loud lounge and shared space. Again, just trying to generate some interest, but also provide a little bit of wayfinding to staff and to visitors to the site. The exterior elevations, we've presented this previously, as I mentioned, we do have some of these geometric elements that we're showing on the exterior. Along with that color palette and bringing that into the building. What we're showing here is a little bit more specifics as to what those colors are and what those materials are. So we can go with those more detailed points, but we have presented this in the past. And again, just kind of rounding out the presentation with some of the exterior perspectives that we've shown in previous presentations. And from there I can open up for any questions or comments.
Hey Director Grotz, you have any questions or comments? Okay. Director Sewell, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I think all the materials and different surfaces that you have look great. My only question is like the copper panels and some of the other panels, are those going to be more expensive to maintain and to clean? I'm just worried about, I mean, they're going to look nice day one, but 10 years down the road, is it going to be something that would tarnish or? Things like that. I'm just not familiar.
Interested. All the materials that we look at, we do our best to make sure that they can, for lack of a better word, take a punch. You know, we, we know that this building is going to be used for, you know, public and or for many years by the site staff. So we do want to make sure that everything's well maintained and easy to maintain on top of that. So there are certain materials that will weather better than others. And I think a lot of the board members have visited East Valley. And again, that's kind of the level of finish that we're aiming for, for this project and that project, I think, has held together very well throughout the years. And we're using that same design aesthetic, that design eye and kind of our experience with those types of materials. So we'll do our best to maintain that and we'll work very closely with Brian and his staff too. In terms of if, you know, their staff has any specific quibbles with certain materials or have had issues in the past, but. But we are doing our best to find ones that can be easily maintained and that will last.
Okay, thank you.
Director Duncan, any questions or comments?
No, it looks good. It looks like it's coming along nicely.
Life isn't right, any questions or?
Just had a, just a comment on dark carpeting in high traffic areas. I wasn't sure. I saw some, it looked like black carpeting. I just wanted to, yeah, I know that in our desert, the dirt is light colored and the little rocks that get stuck in your shoes and stuff. I just was wondering if a dark carpeting would be, you know, okay, maybe in non-traffic areas, but that's just me just asking.
Whenever we do have transitions onto carpet from the exterior, we always put some kind of walk off mat. So it'll basically kind of capture that dirt in that one area before you transition into, we'll call it the higher level finish. So that's one way we try to mitigate any of those types of issues. But yeah, I think maybe the boardroom might be the only area that we have currently. That has that potential. Everywhere else we do have a hard surface coming in from the outside. And again, that's us balancing the boardroom aesthetic, wanting to be a little bit higher level than other spaces, but again, we can help mitigate those types of.
Okay, and I know they're little tiny samples, you know, so they maybe a much bigger piece would be more of a lighter gray, maybe not totally black like some of it. Kind of looks so. Carpet would be worse, as President Martin said, so.
I think this is rendering it a little darker than it really is. And I think one of the things with a dark color flooring material like that or a dark color carpet is it actually shows dirt less. Than, than a lighter product.
Yeah, as long as it's got a marbling or something to it. Work out better.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we'll provide samples as well, so. So you, you will have that another opportunity because just like Roger was mentioning, sometimes when you're looking out of the screen, the color does come off a little bit differently. But we'll make sure we provide those samples too and we can kind of dial that in.
Anything further from our general manager?
No, but it does look like a lot of thought is going into this and that's what we need. We're going to live with this for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think your staff has a lot to say about the colors too, so I kind of leave it, I leave it up to you guys. You're going to have to live with it and work with it, so, you know. I, I like the colors. I'm not complaining about it, just to let you know.
Okay, anybody after reviewing the, the agenda packet, if have any additional questions, they can bring them up on, on Monday. Moving on to item 12, resolution 22, 2022 dash 20 recommending. Approval of the Skyborne Development Partial Assignment and Assumption Agreement. Is recommended to adopt resolution 2022 dash 20, recommending the approval of a partial assignment and assumption of public water system. Improvement and water service connection fee credit reimbursement agreement authorizing. Skyborne Ventures LLC to assign water connection fee credits to Gallery Skyborne Partners LLC. As required by the third amendments to the Public Water Systems Improvement and Water Service Connection Fee Credit. Reimbursement Agreement for Track 32030 and complete with all exhibits. Arden, you're going to have to translate that for me.
Well, you know, it kind of feeds in, you know, this sounds complicated, but it's really procedural, ministerial in nature. We, by contract, we need to, they need our improvement, they need our approval to assign these. These meters and so this requirement is in the contract and I'll let Brian elaborate on that somewhat. And let you know it's every time they get ready to have someone build on their property, then we need to go through this assignment process.
Brian?
Thank you, President Martin, members of the board staff, just a couple of key points before I start with a true discussion. First of all, there, there was, obviously there's some text in that original agenda that's incorrect. It's no longer gallery. It's actually Lennar. So that's the first thing I want to mention. The second thing I want to mention is this is different than the agreement that you've seen previously. That agreement was talking about concessions or deals. Would made part of the development agreement. This is a true assignment of development impact fees. What I mean by that is when Skyborne Ventures purchased the Skyborne Development, if you will, from D R Horton. They received land in the engineering stuff that was done, plans, reports, things like that, infrastructure and more importantly, at least. For this item is the, the development fees that was negotiated as part of the development agreement. Those fees specifically, in this case, water fee credits are compensation for specific water improvements. That not only benefit the development, also the district. In this particular case, they did a couple of reservoirs. They did a transmission main. They also built a well. All of that totaled around thirteen million dollars, just short of that. So ever since this development started, they've been basically taking out and paying development impact fees with their meter, when they buy their meters. Out of that thirteen million dollars. So when they bought, and I say they, when Lennar Homes purchased. What we consider Village 2, 108 lots from Skyborne, they basically want to transfer what's in that fee credit to Lennar. We are, we are the ones that hold on to that, that credit, if you will, so we're involved by this assignment to say that that's okay. Because the agreement is actually between Lennar and Skyborne. So from that perspective, we're a third party just allowing this assignment to happen. This is only water, sanitary is handled a little bit differently. It's an agreement between those two. But we may work through that when we're looking at the next degree, next amendment to the original development agreement. So there are a lot of moving parts to this, but hopefully that clarifies this is just the assignment of development fees. That we've had as a credit toward the development itself.
This is, go ahead.
This is a process we'll go through every time they get ready to move and build in the, but. It's, so you'll see this back on the agenda again as we, as we move forward with that development.
Very good point. We've looked at Village 1, this is Village 2, and there's 10 specific villages within the Skyborne Development.
Okay. Director Sewell, any comments or questions?
Yes. This transfer of title, whether it's paper or, or whatever, just doesn't affect their bond at all, does it? Doesn't relieve that umbrella of that bond?
No, it does not. No, no. Director Grotz, any, any comments or questions?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Wright, none? And I have none, so thank you. Moving on to item 13, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility update. Anything new on that?
Well, yes, we're, we're, it is amazing. I've been out a couple of times and if you think during the groundbreaking, it looked amazing. You should see it now. There, there's a lot of rebar and a lot of construction that's going on, but I'm going to let Steve. Present to you the progress that we're making. Okay, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, General Manager Wallam. Good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board. I'm going to run through a quick slideshow on the treatment plant in just a second here, and I have a short time lapse video. It really just highlights the overall progress at the site over the last. It really just highlights the overall progress at the site over the last month since the June board meeting. A couple procedural items first regarding the other ancillary components to the treatment plant project. The conveyance line, the final design package has been completed by the consultant and staff is working on preparing the final bid package. And that's expected to go out to bid in the next couple of weeks. So that's good progress there. In addition, the area M2, where this staff is completing the final plan check for that this week, that will go back to the consultant and we expect to have that final bid package in about a month and be able to put that project out to bid as well. And again, that's going to be constructing the, the conveyance line is going to be delivering flows from the Dos Palmas Lift Station to the regional plant and the area M2 collection systems over off of Dillon Road and Bubbling Wells. And that will be a septic to sewer component that is going to abate over 400 septic tanks and construct the backbone sewer collection system. I did have a check-in call with the State Water Resource Control Board this afternoon, checking in on the status of the grant and funding agreement. I was notified that the contracting department is finishing up the agreement this week. From there, it routes back through the different legal, environmental and finance departments for a final QA QC before it goes in front of the Assistant Deputy Director, then to Mission Springs to review, make any potential changes or comments, and ultimately will be in front of you for approval. We expect to have that sometime in August, which means we'll likely be bringing that in front of you by September for approval. So if there are, are there any questions on that before I jump into the fun slideshow portion?
Hey, any questions from the board? Director Grusha, any questions?
No questions. Just thank you very much for the update.
Okay, anything further from our general manager?
Nothing.
Okay, you go into the other part of your presentation then.
Okay, will do. Thank you, President Martin. Let me share my screen. All right, so I'm not gonna bore you with the overview. I'll just get right into it. The plant drain pump station slab on grade four was completed. So that's the base slab for the plant drain pump station. So you can see the concrete being pumped into the formwork and rebar down at the bottom. In the background, you can see the beginning of the floor for the treatment tanks, the four SBR sequence batch reactor treatment tanks. Those are also all the late, rebar is being laid for those and all the forms for the construction joints are being laid out. After the pore was completed on June 14th, they quickly cover everything with these, what are called thermal blankets. These thermal blankets really help control the overall temperature of the concrete. That's one of the biggest components of not just working in a desert compliant climate, but working with concrete of this thickness. You know, these walls and slabs are all three feet thick and some as high as much as five feet thick. There's a lot of heating that goes on during that concrete curing process. So the contractor is doing everything they can to help mitigate that during construction. If you have excess heat, it could lead to concrete degradation, failures, cracking, so on and so forth. So this is a very large component of the construction of this plant is to ensure that the concrete is poured and maintained at a correct temperature as it cures. After that process is complete, they'll, they're in the process now, or you can see here, they're stripping the forms and getting ready to build that rebar up the rest of the way for this pump station, which is about 30 feet deep in total. And I'll have some photos in a few minutes of the rest of that process. Here you'll see this is going to be the slab for the big SBR treatment tanks. This is where the majority of the treatment process will happen. These will be four rectangular tanks going across your screen from left to right. They're about 120 feet long, 20 feet wide and, or excuse me, 30 feet wide and 20 feet deep. You can see here kind of at the bottom of your screen, there is a significant amount, close to 100 conduits, electrical conduits that need to kind of intertwine and weave through that bottom slab and get to where they need to be to help control the equipment and monitor the treatment process during or once it's in operation. So it's a very, very complex, very elaborate process as it's going through. You can see here, the rebar crews are now laying the top mat. This, this, again, this slab is about three feet thick. So there's a bottom rebar mat that goes in, the diameter of those rebar anywhere from a half inch to one inch in diameter. And again, they're setting the top mat here. Additional rebar crews completing all the rebar embedments. We began work on the administration and operations building grading and electrical trench. So that starts with the over excavation, confirming that the subgrade is of sound nature and then building that back up and compacting and wetting it so that it's able to have a slab port on it in the near future. There are some large concrete trenches that go from the operations building into the SBR tank that blower conduits, electrical conduits will be ran through. That's working there. You can see in this photo, again, these are electrical duct banks. Those are six four-inch conduits. They'll all be concrete encased as part of the control and electrical equipment that goes to and from the operations building and the SBR tanks. And then over the last two and a half weeks, the contractor J.F. Shea has been working on forming and pouring the plant drain pump station walls. This is about 30 feet tall, the structure that you see in front of you, and again, about three feet thick. So they're working on both the inside interior and exterior rebar mats. And you can see the rebar crews again, they're working their way up the wall, laying all of the rebar. The crane in the background is actually bringing in a big segment of that rebar to be put into place. From there, I wanted to show you this photo. Part of that thermal control plan that I mentioned is we have cooling pipes that run through these three-foot thick walls. So you see all those white conduits or white pipes. Those are just, you know, half-inch PVC pipes that run through there that the contractor can circulate water through to help control temperatures and mitigate any addition or too much heat in the concrete curing. In addition, there's, you know, a pipe penetration. So that'll be a pipe that will ultimately go through, through this three-foot thick wall. This is the exterior form now. So now the, that's gonna help shore up and now the concrete will be poured between these two sandwich forms. The pore started about four in the morning last Thursday, a week ago, or excuse me, last Friday. And then the forms were stripped as of yesterday and it's gotten, it's, sorry, last Thursday. And then they stripped the forms and they're getting ready to start forming up the rest of the pump station that will be poured. But again, these are about 30-foot tall walls that you see in front of you. And this is kind of a general site overview of where the plant's at as of July 6th. And so with that, I just want to run through a quick a quick time lapse video. Bear with me to get that set up. Okay, so this is about early to mid-June and this is right when they're finishing the excavation. And I'm, sorry, that's running faster than I wanted it to. You'll see this is kind of day by day. It takes snapshots every 15 minutes. And you'll see that they've completed all the excavation. They're starting to lay all the rebar down, that bottom mat for the big SBR tanks. Now they're gonna start forming up this kind of checkerboard pattern where they do their concrete pores in different segments. On the bottom left of the screen, you see the plant drain pump station slab was poured. The thermal blankets are on there for several days while it cures. And then again, continued forming, pouring, laying conduits now. Those, all those great pipes are all the conduits running through the slabs. And then now you'll start to see the walls on the plant drain pump station go up on the left-hand side of your screen and continued work on the SBR slab. So you really get to see the magnitude of what's happening on the project on a day-by-day basis. I like to think, looking at this time lapse, it's pretty impressive to see it go up and actually see the magnitude of this project. And, you know, it really goes to show what, what you're really getting for the cost of this project at $41 million. It is quite intense. And with that, I will end my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Excellent presentation. Director Grusha, any comments or questions?
Questions. When, when finished, where would the grade rest along that? I see you've got it below grade. Is that building up so that it eventually becomes above grade or what am I missing there?
So that pump station that I mentioned, that's about, that will stick out about anywhere from six to eight feet outside of the finished grade. So the operations building will be next to that on grade and that will be about six or eight feet above it. As you kind of work your way to the, to the other sides of the SBR tank, you'll actually be about four feet above grade. So if you were standing next to it, you could actually get in and physically see the treatment happening without being on a ladder or scaffolding or anything like that.
Great. And so it would, would it be as an example, would you consider the roadway at grade or is there, are we changing that from the natural? I'm just surprised that looks like it's, you know, we're building down and not, I'm just thinking a flood, you know, flooding. I don't know what the flood plain is there, but it seems like that was something that's part of the design of it. And I just wondered where, where that would end up occurring if there is flooding.
A great question, Director Grusha. Overall, the main pad that the site that we're working on is built up about five feet taller than the natural grade around it. That gives us that flood protection. There's a drainage ditch that goes around the outside, a natural drainage ditch ditch to intercept any flows coming towards the site. And it puts them back out, back into the natural channel. And it has a dissipation area where it actually puts the flows back out exactly how it would have been during a normal rainfall event. But again, the site is about five feet above. And I'm kind of saying that most of the tank is four to eight feet outside of that.
So, so most of what we're looking at won't be visible someday soon, I guess.
Correct. Yeah, it's gonna, it's all gonna get backfilled, you know.
And you mentioned a number, 41 million, which I was pleasantly surprised to hear. Did something, did we get good news that I didn't hear about?
That's the, that's the construction cost of the treatment plant only, not the conveyance line and not the M2 collection system.
Oh, I was, I was under the impression that was in the 50-plus range. And that was why I hadn't heard, I heard, I remember we were at 30 million, then we were at another number and then we were at 51 or 54 million. And that's when we voted on it and I was like, I don't know if this is, but anyway. So is it, are we settling at 41 million as the expectation now?
Yes, the contract that was awarded to J.F. Shea was 40 million, 900,000 and change. So that is the construction contract just for the treatment plant only. The conveyance line that I mentioned, that will be bid separate. That's, you know, I don't want to speculate on the cost with the way the market is right now. Our engineer's estimate's around six to seven million for that, or that's the engineer's estimate. So those, we'll see what those costs are when they come in. But the treatment plan alone, like I said, we only awarded 40, just under 41 million to J.F. Shea to complete it.
Great. And when you spoke in terms of the grants, we've got 16 million, right, to apply to it now. It sounded like you're hot on the trail for what I guess sounds like full funding. So does that, that full funding number for the plant alone? Or will that, will we be able to include the two other components into that?
So Director Grusha, that, so the entire program with all the staff costs, construction management costs, everything together is around 68 million. And the, the State Water Resource Control Board is proposing, gave us a grant for the full $68 million amount.
All right. Excellent news. Thank you very much for that. And I know it's been, I've been a little sketchy on some of this stuff, but it's only because of so many other things flying around that it's almost like swatting flies with this group. And it, it starts to show in all aspects of my time here on the board. So I apologize for those misunderstandings. You're doing a great job for the district. And I hope that the public is aware of that and going forward, the benefit to our public because of this project is, can't be calculated in words. It's going to really be important for the watershed. And I'm looking forward to seeing this completed and having the first inflows. I want to be there and be part of the ribbon cutting when that happens. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, anything further?
None for me, sorry.
Okay, Director Sewell, any questions or comments?
No, just a great presentation and I really appreciate all the video and photo documentation. You know, it's still gonna be impressive when it's finished, but to see how far some of these tanks go down and just the scale of everything. It's great that we have all that. So thank you.
Director Duncan?
No, same as I said earlier, our admin building, I'm glad it's progressing. You're doing what you gotta do. So keep going.
Vice President Wright?
Yeah, just thanks, Steve. Good job. I just ditto what everybody else said. I'm excited about the project. I would like sometime when, when you think it's appropriate, I'd like to go out and physically take a tour when, when you feel it's ready for that. So thanks.
I think that's a fantastic idea, Director, right? It really is impressive and nice to see the magnitude in person.
And all I can say with respect to comments on this project is ditto what the other directors have said. Good input on there. General Manager Wollam, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing more.
Okay, all right. We can skip over the Critical Services Center because we've already had that presentation. So moving on to the consent agenda. We've got two items, approval of the minutes for June 1st, June 16th and June 20th. And item 16, Register of Demands. Take a look at that over the weekend and we'll be voting on that on Monday. Okay, moving on to directors' reports. Does anybody want to give their directors' reports today? Monday, okay, Nancy? Monday, Monday and Director Grusha on Monday or you want to do it today?
I, I'm having trouble, and I don't think I have a report to give this.
Okay, that's okay. All right, moving on to General Manager's report.
Um, they, I, again, I need to apologize, I guess, for a mistake in not getting all of the items on, on the Thursday, this Thursday agendas meeting. I have four more additional items that I would, that I'm going to bring to you on Monday. They're again, mostly just procedural in, in nature. But unfortunately, they are time sensitive. You can take a look at them. And we will include all the staff reports for your review over the weekend. They're, they're, they're pretty simple and straightforward and you can ask any questions on Monday. And if you want to table them or take them off, that's your prerogative. Good, I'll, I'll be including that with the new agenda tomorrow. Okay, that's it. That's all I have.
Before we go on further to District Council comments, I want to apologize to our District Council, Peg Battersby. She had some comments on, on one or two of the items that we went over and I didn't give her the opportunity to weigh in on that. So Peg, go ahead.
Well, thank you, President Martin and members of the board.
Could you speak up a little bit louder or get closer to the microphone there?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know where the microphone is in my office. So can you hear me? Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I, I think three of you know who I am pretty well. I don't think I've met Directors Grusha or Sewell yet, but I am a member of your General Counsel's Law Firm. And I have been involved with the matter that Director Grusha raised initially in his comments this evening or this afternoon. Our office has been in communication with the District Attorney's Office, both before your last meeting and afterwards. At your last meeting, if you look at your minutes from the meeting, there was an announcement following the closed session.
I'm sorry, Peg, I can just barely hear you.
I'm sorry, there was an announcement following the closed session after last meeting. And I'm gonna read it to you. There was a motion in favor of filing a motion to initiate quo warranto proceedings on behalf of the district with respect to Director Duncan and Director Grusha to determine whether they satisfy residency requirements within the division that elected them. The, our law firm has moved forward with preparing those documents. They'll be brought forward to your meeting on Monday. And the District Attorney's Office is aware of the process that is being followed by state law. It is the exclusive process for testing the qualification of elected officers to, to their positions. So I just wanted to let you know that we are moving it forward and it will be coming forward again on Monday. And I think we're, we're moving in the right direction here and with the board's direction.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Okay, and I, I want to make just one note. We can either do, one thing I did. We can either do, one thing I did forget is we were gonna do the, the financial report on Monday since Arturo is gone, but we could do the P R report also today if you want to do that. Or you can do it Monday. Okay, we'll do it Monday.
Yeah, okay. And moving on to director comments, I'm gonna start off with Director Garsha, go ahead with your, with your comments, director comments.
I won't fall for that. I'll wait for you to complete yours. Thank you.
Okay. Director Sewell?
I had no comments, thank you.
Okay. Vice President Wright?
No, no, no comments. Yeah, well, one, one, one small comment. On camp, we get, we get these emails on camp, and it looks like our interest has gone up from point zero two, or whatever it was, to point three eight. Am I reading that one right?
Yeah, you mean as far as investments?
Yeah, our camp investments, right, C A M P? No? Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Arturo. I think that's a little.
Hi.
I have, I have, no, yeah.
Maybe it's what, maybe it's just what it's gone up to, maybe.
We'll, we'll see, might be. I would like to, before I provide an answer, I want to be sure I'm accurate.
Yeah, okay. I'll ask Arturo, I should have waited till he was here. I also just wanted to, I read an article, there's an article about beer yeast can filter lead from water. It's a new, it's a new study they're doing, so I'm thinking that might be really a point. And for people who have lead pipes in their homes and stuff, that could be really important. I know, yeah, really. Flush the beer down the toilet, I don't know.
Anything else?
No, thank you. I'll wait till Monday to do the rest.
Director Duncan?
I have two things. This is, I think, in Stallman or chapter number four in my ongoing quest for a new home. Despite the best efforts of two very mentally ill stalkers, Diane and I have been able to stick to our plan very methodically, come through the Coachella Valley. Gosh, I can tell you how many times now, bumper to bumper through the valley. Fourth of July, we found, and this is back to good news, bad news, like I, like I said before. Fourth of July, we found the perfect home in the perfect neighborhood at the perfect price. So we are now getting ready to be homeowners again. Okay, that's the good news. Bad news is this house is in Rancho Mirage. So I will be leaving the board. We're scheduled to close November, November, August sixteenth. And despite Director's, Garsha's comments, I would welcome the board to continue verifying my address within my division right now. Because I do, I do live within my division, and all is good. Second thing, and I'll, I'll make this statement, and then I, I have a question to ask. So with all this, I'm leading up to a question. I have owned, I, my wife and I have owned property in Idaho for a very long time. It's never been an issue. In the year two thousand, we bought a brand-new boat. Since then, we've been going to Lake Havasu, spending most of the summers there, sometimes renting a home, sometimes leasing home long-term, never been a problem. This last year in October, the developer or builder finished our house. We have a vacation home in Arizona, which is totally legal, totally above board, didn't hide it from anybody, but we own property in Arizona. Director Garsha and Russell Betts got wind of it and decided to make it into something that's not. They have complained, filed complaints, called every news agency, every political advocacy group, the DA's office, they have filed complaints with everyone they know of. I could personally care less. I know I'm in the right. The problem is, every time a complaint is filed, every time a news report goes out, whatever the case may be, Mission Springs Water District now gets letters and phone calls, which we turn over to the attorneys and staff time. So what I would like to know, and this is not just for my own benefit, I think our customers deserve the right to know this. I know you can't get it by Monday, maybe by next board meeting. If you could tell me how much Steve Garsha and Russell Betts have cost this district on a wild goose chase that has gone nowhere, I would like to know that, please. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay, and I have nothing to comment on. There will be no closed session this, today, on Monday, and without, the meeting is adjourned.